Well, welcome and good evening. Thank you for joining us this evening. We would normally, if the first is a meeting, call the meeting to order. Tonight, though, we've got a little bit different lineup in terms of the facts that we have a public hearing. Public hearings are held in regards to a variety of different issues. Public hearings are notice given by the city of an action that is to be taken, and we will entertain comment to that regard as well, too. Tonight, we have a public hearing called for the consideration of the closure of a portion of city-owned road. This is notice hereby given that the City of Greer Municipal Corporation, organized and existing under the laws of the State of South Carolina, will hold a public hearing for consideration of an ordinance to close a portion of a city-owned road known as Biblebrook Drive pursuant to Resolution 6-2020 on August 25, 2020, at 6:30 p.m. at Greer City Hall. The portion of Biblebrook Drive to be identified as closed, abandoned and closed is identified as 15,110 square feet, which is .345 of an acre, and more particularly described on the survey dated July 8, 2020, prepared by Upstate Surveying Associates LLC for the City of Greer. The portion of the road to be closed is bordered on all sides by properties owned by AHOPE143 Properties LLC, Timber Lake Properties LLC, Kenneth Darren Wilson and Morris Kenneth Howard, Sr., Barbara W. Howard as trustees of the Ken and Barbara Howard Family Living Trust dated January 14, 2020, identified by Spartanburg County Tax Map Number 51800100, 51800200, Having called the public meeting to order, we will do two things. First, I am going to ask the city attorney to come to the podium, if he'll make his way to the podium. He is going to bring information to council in regards to this closure. For those that wish to speak in regards to the closure, I am going to ask if you would to, and I believe the easiest thing for us to do would be to start a line back by the wall where the petition is here. If y'all will space out going towards the doors that you came in, and let's leave an appropriate amount of distance, let's say six feet between each one of you, then we will call you to the podium. That way, your comments can be recorded as a matter of record. So if you would like to make your way now to this area here behind us where the petition is, and then space out, I will let you speak as you are lined up, and then we will go from there. So if you wish to speak, we'll start a line. All right, good evening. If you will remember, back in March of this year, you passed a resolution authorizing me to move forward with the closure of a portion of Biblebrook Drive, a city-owned road. You passed that resolution, and I proceeded to move forward with complying with our ordinance by providing appropriate notices and advising the public of what we are intending to do. First of all, to provide you by way of a brief background, the city entered into an agreement back in November of last year with CSX Railroad, and that agreement is attached to your materials. And that agreement provides that the city is going to consent to the demolition of a wooden bridge structure that crosses over on Biblebrook Drive just off of Highway 290. And it's, the bridge has been deemed unsafe by CSX, also pursuant to a study done by our fire department. The city, fire trucks could not, would not be safe to also go over the bridge. This agreement provides that CSX would handle the removal of the wooden bridge, and that CSX would also contribute up to $10,000 towards roadway improvements where Biblebrook Drive will terminate into, right above the bridge. The agreement further provides that if the city decides to build a new bridge in the future, that CSX will provide the city with an easement at no cost to the city to build that bridge in the future if the city elects to do so. I'm not sure if I'm going to be good at the technology here, but we've got a lot of pictures attached to your agenda. Okay. And these are pictures that show the area, the affected area of Biblebrook Drive. Thank you for that. All right, first, that's the picture of the bridge, and then next to that is a picture of, or this actual survey that's been recorded in the Spartanburg County Registered Deeds Office. It's hard to see on this picture, but the shaded area there shows you the only, the portion that we're seeking to close. So right before that shaded area, on the other side of the, on the other side of the tracks, there is going to be constructed, has already been partially constructed, a hammerhead turnaround where folks who were coming down Biblebrook Drive towards Highway 290 will be able to turn around where the road will be closed. These are pictures of Biblebrook Drive, also pictures of the notice of the public hearing that we're having tonight. Picture on the right is a picture of the partially constructed hammerhead turnaround, and also is an overhead view, which gives you an overhead shot of that turnaround, which is just, just before the bridge there on your left. And there's some additional aerial photo showing the wooden bridge and a bridge showing the inland port in the background. So our ordinance makes sure that I provide proper notice to anyone that's affected by this road closure. And so what I have done is I have sent a certified mail notice of this pending road closure in this public hearing to all the abutting property owners. And when I mean by abutting, all the property owners whose property touches the area of the road sought to be closed. And the mayor, when he read off the notice of the public hearing, identified those, those property owners. We also posted notice in the Greer Citizen, which one, which ran once a week for three weeks, notice of this public hearing, and we also posted signs along the roadway notifying the public of the public of this hearing this evening. So our ordinance has been complied with in all material respects, and later tonight on your agenda is an ordinance for first reading to close the portion of Biblebrook Drive that is identified in the, in the survey that was on the previous slide. That's all I have at this time. And also, I have Robert Rue and Steve Branner, city engineers, who can, who can identify or talk about any logistics with the construction project with CSX, who I understand is ready to get forward with removal of the bridge as, as soon as possible. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hughes. We will look to them for advice if we have questions in regards to the first reading of the ordinance, so we'll do that when it comes up on the agenda. We'll welcome speakers at this point in time. If you would like to come to the podium, if you will identify yourself by name and then give your address as a matter of record, we will entertain your petition this evening. So Ms. Ralph, you're the first one up, so you're the first one up. How about that?
Good evening. I'm Allison Ralke. My address is 227 Galena Lane. I understand that a lot of work has taken place to close the bridge over the CSX tracks, including installing a 70-foot turnaround, grading the land, and installing gravel. I'm disappointed homeowners were not made aware of this work or given an opportunity to speak on this issue until this public hearing. I do want to add that I live in the Canyon Ridge subdivision, which is directly next to the proposed bridge that is scheduled to be demolished. I moved into the neighborhood in July of 2018, and the bridge was already closed. However, I did not think that it would never not open back up. With the push to get people to visit downtown Greer, it's certainly an inconvenience to have to go around Wade Hampton Boulevard. Getting to tonight's council meeting is a great example of that. I'm probably not going to bring up any points that someone else living in this area has not already said, but I would certainly like them noted and taken into consideration. As we speak, homes are being built on Ruddy Creek Circle off of Biblebrook Drive, and I'm told at least four more homes are coming. More homes equals more vehicles on Biblebrook Drive, and the backup to turn on to Wade Hampton Boulevard will continue. Additionally, the one overpass that homeowners currently use close to Sunny Glen Drive in Ward's Creek does not allow for two vehicles to pass in one time. The asphalt on part of that overpass is starting to cave in. I'm happy to show someone from the city what I mean as I walk that area daily. I'm concerned the weight capacity of buses, trash trucks, and other large vehicles will take a toll on that one overpass that we currently use. My next point is the need for emergency response and how quick the City of Greer could get to the neighborhood and, on the flip side, being blocked in or out of the neighborhood if an incident happens on Biblebrook Drive. I have two examples of that in just the two years that I have lived in that neighborhood. In April of 2018, there was a single-vehicle wreck on Biblebrook Drive that required Tiger River Fire, Spartanburg EMS, and a tow truck. I have photos of that incident, and I was blocked into my neighborhood for more than an hour. The other one is where an 18-wheeler with no trailer tried to make a three-point turn at Sunny Glen Drive. I guess the driver thought the "bridge closed" sign applied to the, the overpass closest to Sunny Glen, and they got stuck in the ditch. I do believe there are some inconsistencies on who should repair the bridge, whether it's CSX or the city, but I hope there can be some mutual agreement for the homeowners that use this road every day. If not, I hope improvements to the overpass that we do use now will be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. I'm Ron Conover. I live at 128 Flint Lane. I'd like to thank you for letting us come and speak tonight. I want to tell you about an incident I had about two and a half years ago, maybe just a little bit longer. I had my hip replaced, and I fell, and it completely knocked my hip out of place. EMS come down Point Set Highway, and they actually came to the bridge and found, remembered that the bridge was closed and had to go all the way around to come and get me. And I laid on the kitchen floor in a lot of pain. And a couple of months after that, there was a lady that had a heart attack up the road from us, and I'm sure that that was pretty much the same situation where the ambulance had to go around. Right now, the fire department could come straight down Point Set, cross the wooden bridge, and get there. Now with the bridge closed, they have to go completely around on Lister Road and up that other side road. The second point I'd like to make is, in the wintertime, the wooden bridge gave us an, an option to get out of our neighborhood. The way it is now, if it snows and ices, there's no way to get down or up that bridge. So I'd like you to take that into consideration, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, good afternoon. My name is Carian Booker, and I stay at 554 Biblebrook Drive. Contrary to what everyone else is going to say today, it seems like your decision is pretty much made up in regards to what's going to happen with the bridge, of it being removed and all the, you know, the work that's been put into it. I just want to piggyback on what Allison stated of our one-lane culvert that, you know, that we currently use. I really feel like economically, behind my property, there's approximately 99 acres that's for sale. The access to that property from 290 has to go over the railroad, and then if you were to possibly develop that property, you only have a one-lane culvert to access the backside of Biblebrook Drive. Today, I just want you guys to, maybe looking forward, because, I mean, it's inevitable. That bridge is more likely going to be closed. To improve the infrastructure of Biblebrook Drive, to possibly put a bridge at that location, possibly sidewalk, I hate that it's gotten to this point because I, I believe the city could have used this opportunity to possibly rehab that, that wooden structure, maybe take it away from car use and, you know, make it just pedestrian-only, you know, using some type of trail system to connect to the city, but maybe those things can be, be discussed. I mean, ideally, it would be great to, to fix the bridge, but I understand that it's in bad disrepair, so moving forward, I'd like to look at the infrastructure of Biblebrook Drive and improve our access. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Kenneth Wilson, 675 Biblebrook, own property on both sides of that bridge. I just find it awful strange when y'all sell my grandma's house across the road, the bridge gets shut down the next day. That bridge, we've been using it forever. I take a two-car hauler with two cars on it all the time. I don't understand why we wouldn't notify before then myself. Y'all just cutting us off totally down through there. Now for me to get to my property, and plus, if y'all put a turnaround up there, I've been so much stuff stolen and people pulling up there at the top, and I've had to call the police on people several times up there. And you can go back and look at all the calls that have been made. If you put a turnaround up there and ain't nobody can see them, I can only imagine. I've had 17 cars stolen from there in the past eight years. So I don't look to see that getting no better. I guess that's all I got to say. I appreciate you listening, but I wished I'd been notified long before then.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Tarek Itani, and I'm located on 111 Flint Lane. I moved into the neighborhood on September of 2017, shortly after the bridge was closed. I was like, it's just going to be a matter of one month, two months, three months. Hasn't been fixed. I was like, okay, maybe it's taking longer, because we know the bridge on Memory Drive Extension at 604, or about 600, got one time flooded, and it took about six months to get it fixed. I was like, maybe this is the same case as that bridge. I'm just going to give them a little bit longer, and here we are, almost three years since that road's been closed, and then it hasn't been fixed yet. During these three years, if you just want to piggyback like this, what you guys said, quarter of a mile, not even, you have to drive eight minutes just to do it, to, to get to it. You have to go all the way to Biblebrook, you have to take Valentine Lane all the way to Lister Road, take Lister Road all the way to Highway 80, take Highway 80, to take an exit to East Point Set to be able to get there. This is, I timed it yesterday, it took eight minutes to do that. And the reason why I had to do this drive is because I had a friend of mine came over, and he had TomTom GPS, and they didn't give him roundabout anything like that, so I was like, I'll be there, don't worry about it. So it took me about eight minutes to do, to go there. So that's when it adds so much time, and it's really inconvenient. It inconveniences everybody that lives in that Canyon Ridge and anybody that want to go back and forth. A lot of people that work maybe at Mingwa, which is, or Wus Chapel 1200, there's a lot of big factories over there, so maybe they might be running late to work or something in the morning, or want to come back home, adding the eight to 10 minutes, it's really troublesome. Along with everybody that said Allison, all the other people that live there, you know, the emergency and the snows and everything, so. And another thing, I also work for Domino's as well, so I deliver pizza all the time, and we thrive to get there as soon as possible, and then that of being closed, you know, instead of being just to cut through, you have to get the extra detour, so convince a lot of the delivery people, like maybe if they're working for DoorDash or Grubhub or you name it, you know, it just adds a lot of extra time and headache for the people itself. So I really encourage you guys to, hopefully you guys can fix it and get her up and running so we can feel happy again. Otherwise, maybe we should have thought of twice before buying that property if we knew that road was going to be closed. So I want to thank you guys for giving us opportunity to express also. I know it's been three years, but I'm finally happy that the opportunity is here for us to say what we had. Thank you guys for that.
Thank you, sir. Before I call the public meeting to, the public hearing to a close, I'd like to ask, by show of hand, is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? In consideration of the closure of a portion of city-owned road, I'd like to ask a second time in a public hearing, is there anyone that would like to speak in regards to the notice given of the closure of a portion of city-owned road? By show of hand? And a third and final opportunity to give public hearing or public comment in regards to the consideration of a closure of a portion of city-owned road. I'll ask a third and final time. By show of hand, would anybody like to speak? Yes, ma'am, the floor is yours.
I'm over, Steve.
Yeah, up here. If you would, as a matter of record, if you'll just give us your name and address, that'd be helpful, please.
Karen Conover, 128 Flint Lane, along with my husband, who spoke about his hip. I'm not meaning to start a controversy or be obnoxious. My question is basically, and I know you all have considerations over every area of the city, but sometimes I just get the feeling, if you're in a kind of a lesser neighborhood and things like this happen, and y'all are doing big things downtown and adding to it and parking garages and hotels and stuff, and then we've got these emergency-type things and the weather-type things in one access road to a relatively populated neighborhood. Just wondering how you all take considerations as to where you're going to spend the tax money we pay for the projects that you decide on, and I just want you to give an extra thought to that, and that's basically my... Thank you. Thank you for letting me comment.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll lay out all the valid points, and I, we appreciate your time, and we will consider this matter later in the meeting. This was a public hearing called for the consideration of the closure of a portion of city-owned road. I will ask if anyone would like the opportunity to speak in regards to this road closure. If so, indicate by a raised hand. I'll ask a second time, if anybody would like to speak in regards to the consideration of a closure of a portion of city-owned road. If you would like to speak in regards to this, please show by a raised hand. And a third and final call, if you would like to speak in regards to the consideration of a closure of a portion of city road, please indicate so by raising your hand. Let the record indicate nobody raised their hand. I'll call the public hearing to a close. Counsel, with that, I want to call the meeting to order. Having called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask that we stand for the pledge of allegiance. Following that, Mr. Riley Bettis will give us an invocation for counsel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for blessing us to be able to exercise our God-given freedoms. Please guide and direct us tonight and always to act as you would have us act, to treat others just as we would want to be treated, and to always remember that the glory for anything we accomplish goes to you. Asking your continued blessings for our city, our state, and our country. In Jesus' name I pray. Counsel will move to the public forum. As a matter of explanation, we have a couple of ways that people can address counsel. You have participated in one this evening, which is a public hearing. Public hearings are typically called to give notice of an action of the city, and we entertain comment from those people that might be affected by whatever action the city is going to be taken. Notice is given in that regard, and as you will see, discussion will be held later in this meeting in regards to an action to be taken, and your thoughts and expressions will be entertained during that discussion. We also entertain petitioners from time to time. Petitioners would notify the city clerk that they would like to participate in the meeting by speaking with counsel. They do so by petitioning counsel. That is scheduled in advance so that we have time to, to make sure that we've got room in the meeting for that and to entertain that motion. The other thing that we do on a regular basis is called the public forum. Public forum is an opportunity for those members of the community that would like to speak to an item that is on the agenda to do so. And this evening, we have one person that has indicated that they would like to speak in executive session. Ms. Amanda Hopper is here this evening to discuss an item that is on the agenda. Ms. Hopper, if you would like to come to the podium, if you will give us your name and address as a matter of record, we will gladly hear your comments in regards to the Lemon Creek speed bumps.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. My name is Amanda Hopper. I live at 172 Lemon Creek Drive in Lyman. I guess I'm a little surprised that I'm the only one here tonight, because if you guys could see our neighborhood Facebook page, you would know that I'm not the only one concerned about speed bumps. I am coming to you tonight as a concerned mother, as a concerned fur mother, and as a concerned neighbor. My son, who is here tonight, is 12 years old. We moved into our home when he was two. We originally moved into our home, we did have the temporary speed bumps. I guess they're like rubber. Over time, they get really worn down, and the first weekend that we lived in our home, someone hit one of those speed bumps going too fast, and we thought someone had had an accident outside our home because it literally shook the pictures on the wall. So that is an indication of how fast people go through our neighborhood. I believe now that you guys have something that says new neighborhoods that are built need to have sidewalks. Our neighborhood was built before this, so there are no sidewalks that we can walk on. We have to walk in the road. Hudson has always, you know, not been allowed to play even close to the road because people go so fast. We do not walk, walk our dog as much as we would because we have to walk in the road, and there's a lot of traffic. He is 12 years old, he likes to ride his bike, but I don't allow him to do that that much because the visibility from our house is not as great as I would like, and people go really fast. We have a lady in our neighborhood who was an avid runner. In fact, she would run when it was, when there was ice on the ground, and she has now, she suffers from dementia, and she still walks and walks and walks all around the neighborhood. I'm concerned for her because she doesn't always pay attention. With the increased traffic, and I'm sorry, I keep looking at my phone, I have notes here, with the increased traffic that we know that Greer has experienced, I do not believe that our previous traffic study is any indication of the kind of traffic that comes through our neighborhood. We are not that far from BMW. It's used as a cut-through during school for people to get over to Greer High School. We have a lot of even work vehicles that will cut through, and I know that it seems like this is just one street in one neighborhood, but it is used by a lot of people. And so I believe that you guys have considered this before. The traffic study did not indicate that we had enough traffic that would merit speed bumps. I also believe that the original plan was for these temporary speed bumps to be replaced by the builder. The builder, to my understanding, went under just after building our neighborhood, and so obviously, he's not going to come back and do it. And so as a concerned mother and neighbor, I'm asking you guys to assist us with this, especially... especially due to the fact that we don't have sidewalks, and at this point, you really can't come in and put those in. That's something we can live with, but having some speed bumps to at least slow people down, and quite frankly, I believe that if people had to slow down, they wouldn't use it as a cut-through as often as they are now. So I would like to ask you guys to consider this, and thank you so much for your time.
Counsel, we will proceed with the meeting at this point, and contained in your packet is the minutes from the council meeting held August 11th, 2020. I'll entertain a motion that they be received.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alford?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel departmental reports are contained in your packet. You have July 2020 reports there before you this evening. Information in that regard is available from the administrator or department heads. We have Ms. Susan Howell joining us this evening for our financial activity report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I'll be presenting the financial summary for July 2020, the first month of our new fiscal year. Beginning with the general fund, the year-to-date revenue is $591,000. The year-to-date operational expenditures are $1,388,000. This does not include $326,000 of expenditures that we, for the downtown projects that are planned but not budgeted. So when you're comparing the operational expenditures to budget, we are 3% under budget. Moving to the dashboards where we compare benchmarks to actual, you'll see that we have an overall benchmark variance of $79,000. And the cash balance in the general fund is $12,540,000. Moving on to the hospitality fund, the year-to-date revenue is $199,000. The year-to-date expenditures are $1,875,000, and the cash balance in the hospitality fund is $1348,000. Finally, the stormwater fund, the year-to-date revenue is $55,000. The year-to-date expenditures are $965,000, and the cash balance is $2402,000. That's a brief summary. If there's any questions, I'll be try to, be glad to have the answer.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, questions? If you need additional information, again, Mr. Mayorman or Mr. Syper would be glad to help you with this.
Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayorman, we will recognize you for the administrator's report, please, sir.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Counsel, good evening. Real quick, a couple of things I just want to bring up. One, you noticed Ms. Howell added to the financial report, the fund balance expenditures that were not part of the year-to-date operational expenditures. To some of you, that may be new. She has never added that before. I have requested the finance begin doing that. These were planned expenses for the downtown project. However, in order, in my estimation, to give a more accurate reflection of the money's being spent, I'd like you to know that those fund balance dollars are being spent for this. So as she moves forward with any fund balance appropriation or any fund balance expenditure, I want you all to know about it. So I realize it was a little bit different than what you may be used to, but I think that's more of an accurate reflection on dollars being spent. The second thing is, you'll notice we've got our parking garage going vertical very quickly in downtown Greer. It's exciting, precast insulation has begun and is due to be completed, I think, five to six weeks. I think that was the last number that Mike gave me, but it's on schedule. So that's a positive thing. And the last thing I want to tell you is that the street, the streetscape extension has begun. You'll see some crews are already starting to do some work on Main. Thursday afternoon, Mayor Danner will be appearing before the Greenville Legislative Delegation Transportation Committee with an application for C funds to assist in this project and offset those costs. So we're very hopeful that they look at our application favorably, and hopefully the mayor does a good job selling the application. But I have all the confidence in the world that the project in and of itself will merit positive consideration. So that's all I have for this evening, sir.
All right. Questions as administrator? As always, he is available, literally, with an open door policy. But again, questions or comments, feel free to get in touch with him. He will be glad to go over that. We have discussed some of those internal changes in terms of reporting. If you want to review any of those numbers or need more information, again, that can be sought through Financial Department or Mr. Mayorman's office. Either one would be glad to give you an update on that, to give us a little bit more accurate reflection of where we are and where some of these funds are, are going as we continue on into Phase Two with the downtown development moving along, as the administrator said, very quickly with the construction on the parking garage and equally as well, but certainly not as, as quick a completion date as the hotel. I had an opportunity to meet with the, with the developers last week for a short meeting one morning. Certainly, they are pleased with the progress and looking forward to having a active presence in the city of Greer. We'll move to boards, appointments of boards and commissions at this point in time. As you are aware, we have had a resignation in the, or on the Construction Board of Appeals and Adjustments. We have a professional opening on that board, a little different than some of the boards that we deal with. This is a specific need that we have for the Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals. This one calls for an architect. You should have information there at your desk in regards to a nomination that I would like to bring this evening. That would be that Gwen Harvey joined that board. Gwen, many of you know, is wife of Mark Harvey. She is a AIA-certified architect. She works with Craig, Golden, and Davis. If you were here when this building was constructed and they were involved in that project, you will know that much of the interior of this building came under her purview, so she is familiar with this building. She won't be lost when she gets here to come to a meeting. Gwen and her family, Mark, live on Taylor's Road here in the Fairview area, active members of our community, and I would like to place her name into nomination. And so I bring that for your consideration. If you will consider this a nomination, I will ask for a second, please. Second. Have a nomination and a second. Questions in regards to Ms. Harvey's service or qualifications? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alford?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, let's move to items of old business. We have a number before us, so we'll jump right in. First item before us this evening is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by CJN LLC located at 220B Street by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of R 7.5 for said property. Ms. Cotty, do you have any new or additional information in regards to the second and final reading of ordinance number 41-2020?
Planning Commission did hold a public hearing, and they recommended approval.
Counsel, this comes as a second reading with staff recommendation and approval. Do I hear a motion to receive? Second. Have a motion in a second. Additional conversation? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alford?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, let's move to the second final reading of ordinance number 42-2020. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Crown Properties LLC located at 210 and 200 B Street by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of R 7.5 for said property. Mr. Cotty, Ms. Cotty, any new or additional information in regards to ordinance number 42-2020?
Just the same, that the Planning Commission held their public hearing, and they did recommend approval.
We have a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission. Staff recommends procedure, proceeding with second and final reading of ordinance number 42-2020. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So move.
Second. Have a motion and second. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alford?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, let's proceed to the second and final reading of ordinance number 43-2020. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a portion of properties owned by Honeywell International LLC located at 85 and 87 B Co. Road and South Bonham Road by, by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of I-1 for said property. Ms. Cotty, any new or additional information in that regard?
Just that the Planning Commission held their public hearing, and they also recommended approval for this case.
Counsel, you have before you a recommendation for approval coming from the Planning Commission. I'll entertain a motion to receive ordinance number 43-2020.
So move.
Second. Have a motion and second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions or comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alford?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you, ma'am.
Counsel, let's move to items of new business, the first of which is the Lemon Creek Drive speed bumps. Lemon Creek Drives in the Riverdale Subdivision have previously had four rubber speed bumps that were in poor condition. These speed bumps were removed during a paving operation and not replaced. Property owners had petitioned to replace the speed bumps. This requires action. Our city engineering staff recommends waiving requirement number five, having a volume greater than 300 vehicles per day, average on the weekday, but not greater than 4,000, with limited case-by-case exception. The road previously had speed bumps, and it currently serves as a cut-through for traffic from Gat Creek Road to East Wade Hampton Boulevard. Should counsel approve the waiving of this requirement, the next steps would be defining the impact area of the proposed speed bumps and getting a petition of approval of 65% of the property owners in the area. Per city of Greer Traffic Calming Policy Resolution Number 7-2013, the following criteria must be met to be considered for this program. Have a functional classification of residential street, have a posted speed of 35 miles an hour or less, be two lanes wide, have an 85th percentile speed of 5 miles an hour over the posted limit, and have a volume greater than 300 vehicles per day, average on the weekday, but not greater than 4,000, with limited case-by-case exceptions. Mr. Robert Rue, who is the assistant engineer, joins us this evening. Mr. Rue's already at the podium. I guess since it took me that long to read that, he got up there. So, Mr. Rue joins us this evening for an overview of the Lemon Creek Drive speed bump situation.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. As you can see on the screen, and Mrs. Hopper alluded to the old speed bumps that were in, this is a February 2017 street view of those rubber temporary speed bumps. And here is the cut-through traffic route from Wade Hampton to State Road 908, and that's, Lemon Creek is that long stretch there. Here's the four previous speed bump locations. There's kind of a stretch of houses, then an open space, and then the remaining stretch of houses on the north. There was kind of two on one side and two on the other. That's all I have for displays. We analyzed this traffic from February 12th to February 19th. We found a five-day average daily traffic of 163, and as the mayor mentioned, our policy requires 300 vehicles per day, average on the weekdays, and that's that requirement number five. It met all one through four, but it does not meet number five. And as was mentioned, engineering staff thinks that since this is used as cut-through traffic and did have speed bumps previously, it's good to move forward with identifying proposed locations and proposed impact areas to get those 65% petition signatures from the residents. And that's all I have. If you have any questions, feel free to...
If you will stay with us, please, sir. I'm sure that we have plenty of questions. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So move.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion and questions.
Mr. Rue, when was the, when was the petition brought to the city, our resident?
I believe the signatures we received were dated sometime 2017, so they sat for a while. But we've had interest and received emails recently to see what was going on in that respect.
Now, is there HOA going to be responsible for the payment of these speed bumps? How will they handle that?
Our policy states that if we get a number of these that get approved through, through all these requirements and get the necessary signatures, 65% of those impact areas, then they get on a list, and city will determine which of those speed bumps, which of those neighborhoods are top of the list, and then we'll pay to install them.
Now, when you say 65% of, of the area, you talking about 65% of people on that street, or?
Of the, so the policy states impact areas. It's not really clear if that's the whole street or open to interpretation. I, I would say for, in this case, it would be the entire street.
Yeah, that was my thought, that it was the street.
I think logically, it would make sense, the whole street, but I think on, it would depend on a case-by-case, neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis.
Who put in the speed bumps before?
So I think the previous, I think it's District Three Councilwoman Anderson, I believe. I think she had requests to put speed bumps on that road, so that's when the temporary speed bumps were installed. And I don't know the full history behind all those discussions. I think that was back before 2017, as that picture showed, so.
Some of us don't remember. Mr. Rue, I, I think it brings up a valid point. Those obviously were, were put in as almost an afterthought, but, but they, they were never intended to be there as long as they were, and they also were, were never particularly affected if we, if, indeed, we go back in there with something that would be a traffic, traffic calming device, would that be a speed table of some kind? What would, what does our, our city requirement say in regards to what goes back in to replace these?
That's a good question. I think the ordinance policy states there's options for paved or rubber, and I've been in talks with Chief Flowers. There is speed tables that would allow them to bypass the speed bumps at full speed through a neighborhood that they would need. So there's several options, and I think that's what would be the next step, is determining what material would be desired and where those would be installed.
So obviously, we have to take action tonight in some regard. Is this, just for clarification from, I guess, my edification, if nothing else, the action that we are taking tonight is in regards to waiving the fifth requirement based on volume, but is this also to ask our engineering group to engage in, in a study to determine what would be the best type of speed control to put in there as well, too?
That's correct. Yeah, I think that would be part of the next steps in discussing with the neighborhood representatives, kind of what they had in mind and their intentions behind the traffic calming.
Okay. And that's what, and you correct that the neighborhood's responsible for going through and getting the residents.
Yes, ma'am.
Or disapproval.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Counsel, some of you know this is not only District Three, but this is actually the street that I live on. This came to my attention. Several residents actually reached out to me about the traffic and the speed going up and down the road, the increasing use of it being a cut-through from over by the high school, getting over to Wade Hampton. And so that's when I reached out to Mr. Grant, Mr. Rue, and they informed me that there'd been, there actually had been a traffic study performed in February and basically brought me up to speed that that was the, the one requirement that wasn't met and the possibility of an exception. I'll just add, you know, obviously I have the benefit of a personal observation of the last ten years living here. You know, people, people absolutely fly down the road. As Mr. Rue mentioned, there is a gap between the houses. There's a power line running right through that area there and people just lay, lay the pedal to metal. And as Mr. Rue said, the, the old bumps were not effective as they were anyway, but especially since the road was repaved in two thousand seventeen. We've just seen the, the volume continue to go up, the numbers notwithstanding from February, of course. And so my, my hope is that you consider the, the exception based on some of the development we're getting ready to do up at the high school. That way, this is only going to get worse, so I know it would help all of the residents to get out in front of this that way. And to be able to, to kind of cut this off at the pass, so to speak.
So the city, when it was paved, the city actually took the speed bumps up?
That is correct. Yeah. So when, when it was milled, they were, and to be honest, we'd, we'd lived in the neighborhood almost eleven years now. Those, the rubber bumps were already worn way down, but they were, they were just annihilated by the time we repaved anyway. Sometimes in some places even broken in half where people were just disregarding them at that point, anyway.
Well, I, I got a little confused. I know Ms. Harper, when she spoke, she said that the builder put them down and said he would replace them when they wore out.
So that's what.
Did the city put them down?
Yeah, that's what we were originally told as it was the builder. I apparently.
That was the city.
Apparently her husband, her representative needs to communicate better with her. It was the city that had put those in. Councilwoman Anderson is what I've learned. What, how, how long ago is that been now? In the two thousands?
Sometime.
You're thinking? Yeah, so almost twenty years ago. So it wasn't, it wasn't the builder, it turns out, but they had been down quite a while.
So that city actually put them down?
Mm-hmm.
Based on Councilwoman Anderson?
That's right.
I, you know, I, I certainly don't have a, an objection to the exception. I mean, we, it's almost likely a problem of our grandfather to begin with, but, you know. The one thing that I do remember from the debate that, that followed this was that we realized that we had to standardize our procedure for this because one of the things that we ran into was that, you know, if we simply opened up the, the idea of traffic calming without some merit to how we determined where that happened and, and what was the most appropriate way of, of, of doing that, that we were, they were open Pandora's box. And so while this is an exception, I think that is worthy. I would vote to move forward with a high degree of caution that, um, that as we, as we go forward that we have a understanding of, um, what the options may be in terms of speed tables and, and other traffic calming devices. I don't know that this is a permanent exception. I think this would be a one-time exception. We'd need to follow the others. But there, uh, there are, as Mr. Hopper just pointed out, emerging cases where developing traffic patterns have altered how roads through subdivisions are being used. And we've got a perfect example in Mr. Dumas's district where we have a road that now has gone from probably a hundred and sixty cars a day to well over nine hundred cars a day just in a matter of under three years, probably two years. And, um, this is, this is gonna, this is gonna be something that we're gonna need to take a look at moving forward. And, um, so I, again, with an abundance of caution, I would certainly be supportive of, of this action, but that we be prepared as we, as we go forward to, to deal with this in, in a same sort of structured fashion.
So do we do this now or do we wait till the neighborhood or the street, the street has gotten a sixty-five percent? I mean, how do you kind of?
We wouldn't ask the neighborhood to get the sixty-five percent until we actually approve the exception. Is that correct, Mr. Rue?
That's my, that's, was our intent in bringing this before you tonight.
If I may, what I would think would bring clarity to this is as part of the motion to waive the fifth requirement would be to, as a portion, as a part of that motion, define the impact area as the street. I think that would help clarify the sixty-five percent and then that gives engineering clear direction on how to go about looking for that sixty-five percent. So as you make a motion, I think that would be the cleanest way of handling it.
I'll say too, there is Yama Sea Court. There's a little cul-de-sac up at one end as well. They will want to stay in this because they, however did they get out of the neighborhood, they are up and down Lemon Creek that way and they're part of our neighborhood as well, so.
They're impacted.
Very much so. Lemon Creek and Yama Sea.
The neighborhood that's on the other side of the power lines, they are not the city.
You're talking about up Lemon Creek?
Right.
So that, that is city.
That's part of it, too.
It was all the way through.
Yeah, and that's Yama Sea Court is on that end.
That's on the top right in the right-hand picture there.
Do we have, uh, it sounds like you're gonna have to continue to study this. It's not like you're just gonna go back in with four speed tables or humps or whatever you decide to go with.
So we would, Steve and I would define the locations with the neighborhood representatives. Work in conjunction with them to, to find the spots and find the best areas to mitigate traffic.
Do we have any idea how much each mitigation is gonna cost?
So our policy states typical costs of these, these types of installations are fifteen hundred to twenty-one hundred dollars. But to be honest, I, I would have to do some further research. Cause we haven't done any in several years. I don't know, since, not since I've been here, so.
Would we not have to decide what you're gonna put before you decide where you're gonna put them?
Logically, yes, I would agree.
I do think that there is some guideline to that in current standards, is there not? They can't go within so many feet of the soft side and they can't go within so many feet of the driveway.
That's correct. Yeah, that's all spelled out in the policy.
Guidelines for where they go. I mean, determining the number would be, would be within the framework of the current guidelines.
What I'm saying is, is you're gonna put something like this or the, we're gonna put the broader thing you and I talked about?
I think, I think we're looking at something that would be more substantial, certainly, you know.
Yes, yes, so we haven't gotten. Sorry. That's correct. Yeah, we were planning to get this roadblock out of the way and then move forward. We haven't gotten that far yet into determining, determining materials or locations yet and discussing that with the fire department.
All right, let's do this. I believe you've made the motion, Mr. Hopper. Would you amend your motion, please, to, uh, to, um, limit this particular study to the Lemon Creek Drive area and, um, Yama Sea Road area as, um, as, as to this particular action, which is to, uh, make an exception to item number five in the list of qualifications. That doesn't prevent our engineering staff from moving forward then with determining location and type of, um, speed limit, I mean, speed control that goes there. And, um, that then will help us move forward on the petition piece of it as well, too.
I amend my motion to exactly that wording that you just said.
You learned it, didn't you?
Lemon Creek Drive.
All right, and I'll need an amendment on this, I mean, a second on the amendment.
Ms. Albert? Second. Ms. Albert, seconds. Okay, any additional conversation in that regard? Questions? Comments? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alpert? Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel, we have the first and final reading of Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-twenty. This is a resolution to adopt the Greenville County Multi-Jurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Plan. We're joined this evening by Fire Chief Dorian Flowers. Thank you, sir, for being here.
Good evening, mayor and counsel. If you remember back in two thousand sixteen, we updated our hazard mitigation plan for the city, followed that in two thousand eighteen by adopting the same resolution that we're asking tonight for Spartanburg County. This is just a continuation of that. What it does is allows us to incorporate our hazard mitigation plan into that of Greenville County, just like we did with Spartanburg County. If you remember, hazard mitigation allows us to look in the community for known hazards to start trying to, um, develop efforts to mitigate those hazards and issues. And then it also allows us to apply for grants and what have you.
I'll entertain a motion to receive Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alpert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Chief, if you'll stay with us there, the next item before us is the Fiscal Year Two Thousand Nineteen Assistance Firefighter Grant. Purpose of the assistance to firefighters' grant is to protect the health and safety of the public and firefighting personnel against fire and fire-related hazards. After careful consideration, FEMA has determined that the recipient's project and/or project submitted as part of the recipient's application and detailed in the project narrative as well as the request, detailed sections of the application, including budget information, was consistent with the assistance to firefighters' grant's purpose and was worthy of award. Chief Flowers?
Yes, sir, thank you. I'm not sure if Ms. Duncan planned it this way, but it, it kind of curtails based off the last, last reading there. And so this is a grant that we applied for. Our current breathing apparatus is reaching end of life. So within the next year to two years, we're gonna have to come to council to ask for funding to be able to replace those, those breathing apparatus. Prior to that, in two thousand nineteen, we applied for the FEMA grant, which is what we're asking you to consider tonight. This is not a budgeted request, so if you do approve this tonight, it will require a budget amendment. The money will come from fund balance and finance will come back to council to get that approved. The total project cost is a hundred ninety-five thousand, two hundred ninety-four dollars. Out of that, the city is responsible for a ten percent share. That ten percent share for the city is seventeen thousand, seven hundred fifty-four dollars, with the federal government paying a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. And that total is the hundred ninety-five thousand that I spoke about. So that is our request, is that you consider that. So that will allow us to replace all of our breathing apparatus that we currently have and also will save us that going forward as far as funding request.
We should get more matches, likely.
I agree.
Mr. Mayorman, this requires action of counsel to ask that finance bring this before us or I don't see an action requirement?
It's a motion to accept the grant.
A motion to accept.
Yes, sir, you're, you're gonna accept the grant and, uh, like chief said, we, management from this perspective doesn't feel like turning down a hundred seventy-seven thousand for the sake of seventeen for SCBA is something that we're inclined to recommend. So again, you are making a motion to accept the grant and we will have to bring back a budget amendment for your consideration to reflect this, this budgetary change. The previous administration instructed the fire department to apply for this. I wholeheartedly agree. It's a, it's a fantastic program and saves us a tremendous amount of money.
Absolutely.
So, but anyway, parliament, from a parliamentary procedure perspective, we just need you to make a motion to accept the grant.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the grant.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion in this regard? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alpert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Counsel, let's move to the first reading of ordinance number forty-five dash twenty-twenty. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Victory Professional LLC, located at eight eleven West Point Set Street from C-two commercial to R-seven point five. Ms. Cotty joins us for this discussion.
All right. Thank you, mayor and counsel. This is a rezoning request on West Point Set Street. It's currently a C-two commercial and they are requesting R-seven five, single-family residential. This is an aerial view of the site, um, near the intersection of Calvary Street and West Point Set. Again, on the corner, it's currently commercial. This is the current zoning map. You can see there's a mix of residential. The purple that you see is OD, which is our office district, and then the red is the C-two commercial. This is our, um, future land use map. This is a residential land use to community, but it's also along a neighborhood corridor. And then this is a street view of the property, again, currently commercial. So, um, Planning Commission held a public hearing and they did recommend approval. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
A show of hand, is the owner of the property or a representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Anything you would, if you'll identify yourself for a matter of the record and then anything you'd like to add before we, uh, we move forward in this regard?
Yes, uh, good evening, Victor Naranjo, two thirty-five Austin Brook Street in Simpsonville.
Is there anything you'd like to add to this conversation?
Uh, well, no, um, just, uh, want to please consider, uh, the residential. The property's been vacant for about five months, so I believe I can give it a better use if we can have a residential.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Counsel, ordinance forty-five dash twenty-twenty, I'll entertain a motion to receive. Have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion.
Change the zoning to R-seven point five, does, what does that give the building to this property? Is it just a single tenant or?
One single-family home. It would be converting the structure to a, a single-family residence.
And I think, was it ever residential at one time or has it always been commercial? And it was, it was, uh, kind of a variance, that kind of way it's, cause I, I've met us happen a lot of times at Point Set. We've got several homes where people live, they're not commercial, but I guess they just want to kind of hang on to that zoning just in case the business wants to occupy the space. Traditionally, they've been used as residential property.
Yes, it's my understanding that this has been commercial. However, they have been vacant and with the pandemic, um, their business went out of business and then they've been unable to get a new tenant due to the economy. And so given the mix of commercial and residential along Point Set, um, again, the applicant feels like, it would be appropriate for residential and that they'd be able to actually occupy it, is our understanding. So, um, from a planning and zoning point of view, because Point Set is so mixed, um, we feel like it's appropriate. However, happy to answer other questions.
It was originally a residential.
Was it?
Not, and not that long ago. Yeah, that's right.
Uh, others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alpert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, let's move to the first reading of ordinance number forty-six dash twenty-twenty. This is an ordinance to change. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by April Bauer located at 305 Buncombe Street from R12 to RM2. Ms. Cotty?
Sure, the applicant is April Bauer, also the owner of the property. This is located at 305 Buncombe Street. The existing zoning is R12. However, this structure is an existing duplex. As you can see, it's a little tough to tell, but the two red dots on this parcel and then the two on each side, so a row of five, are existing duplexes. Oops, sorry. This is current zoning map. Again, the area is R12, but again, those five strips are existing duplexes. And then future land use map is residential land use too. This is a street view of the existing duplex. And so the applicant applied for a building permit to do a small expansion on the rear of the duplex. However, because this is an existing legal nonconformity, our ordinance does have language that they can't extend or make more nonconforming, something for multifamily. Because it's a duplex, it's technically considered multifamily because those are the only districts that a duplex is allowed in. So in order to complete the, again, the rear expansion, they are requesting a rezoning to RM2. Staff does agree with this recommendation, again, because it's an existing duplex, and they'd just be doing a small addition and enhancement to the structure, and then all of the surrounding properties are also duplexes. If they were to receive this zoning, the size of the lot would only allow for a single-family home or a duplex. So they're, if they did, for some reason, tear it down, just given the size of the lot, those are the only two land uses that could go in RM2.
A show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel, for having me. Like she said, we are wanting to turn this one-bedroom, one-bath duplex on each side to a two-bedroom, two-bath, and a laundry room on the, on the rear side of the building. We also plan to spruce it up and make it look a bit nicer as well. So that is our plan. Let me know if you have any questions. And thank you.
We appreciate it. I'll entertain a motion to receive. Have a motion in a second. Floor's open for discussion.
Aren't there several duplexes right there in line with that?
Yes, ma'am, the, the two to each side, so this is right in the middle, and the two on the right and the two on the left are also existing duplexes. It, it is, yes, ma'am. It's, and so right now, it's considered legal nonconforming because duplexes are not allowed in R12. However, in order to expand, they have to come into conformance with the zoning.
They've taken a couple of decades, I don't know if it's called that or not, but they've done an outstanding job on refurbishing the outside, if the inside looks as good as outside, that's good.
When you say legal nonconformance, or is that some type of, like a overlay where you have an R12 in this area and it's just traditionally been used as a duplex, for instance, in this scenario?
Yes, so a legal nonconforming structure and use. So it means it was built either prior to the zoning or somehow it got approved erroneously. I'm not sure which is the case in this, in this case, but typically, we do have a lot of legal nonconforming throughout the city. Typically, it's lot sizes. Typically, it's lot size and not use, but in this case, it happens to be the use and the structure.
Others?
They called it spot zoning at the time.
First reading of ordinance 46-2020. Any additional comment in that regard? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Counsel, we have the first reading of ordinance number 47-2020. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Joshua Tyner located at 228 Davis Road from C3 Highway Commercial to R12. Ms. Cotty, additional information in that regard?
Sure, and I'll actually switch to the aerial of the property because I think it'll be easier to explain. So this parcel is at the end of a cul-de-sac on David Road. David Road, all of the parcels along this road and the cul-de-sac are part of an existing single-family residential neighborhood in Spartanburg County. It is our understanding that in 1995, there was a very large annexation that brought in all of this pink C3 area that you see. And so, again, I'm not really sure, I wasn't here in 1995, but that piece was brought in to the city and zoned to C3 at that time. So again, that current zoning, the C3 is surrounding it. There, the darker brown is RM2. That area that you see is Spartanburg County, and it's unzoned, but it is used as a single-family residential neighborhood. And then our future land use map identifies this area as an employment center. So just off, this is an existing kind of street view of the property right now. It is a wooded lot. The applicant did buy the land after touring the neighborhood and assuming it was residential, and then went to pull a building permit and realized that it was zoned commercial. So I understand that hearing C3 to R12 may seem like something staff wouldn't typically recommend. However, in this case, staff does feel pretty comfortable and confident that it should be a residential in R12. The David Road is the only road in and out of this neighborhood that has access to this piece of property. So we do recommend approval, and Planning Commission did recommend approval as well, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Can you come back to that, ma'am?
Mm-hmm. Which one, do you want the zoning?
Where you had the, is that the zoning?
Yeah.
Color.
Sure. In this area to the north, it is kind of hard to tell, but the gold is R7.5, which is also a single-family residential zoning.
So by carving this property out, doesn't necessarily impede access with the other properties directly behind it, they have other means to get to this property?
I believe so, but there's currently no access recorded on the plat for this neighborhood either, so.
What, what'd you say the future of land use map says?
Employment center.
You're saying the other houses on that street are not in the city?
No, sir, they're Spartanburg County.
This is a huge assumption on my part, but this is 95, pre-GIS. I don't know that the sophistication technologically speaking existed, and this could have just been an errant Sharpie marker on a map that was photocopied, and this is what we've got. So that's a very simple and maybe non-technical answer, but that's what it looks like to me.
You brought up a good point, Lee, though. I don't see how the outer portion accesses their property. I just wonder if the property owner has that, that piece along the highway, they don't want us to soulless?
I'm not sure, the applicant may be here to address that, but...
A show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property here this evening? Josh Tyner?
(laughing) Yeah, not to go back to 1995, because I, I know enough about this issue to write a book as well, too. Go ahead, the floor's yours, sir.
Josh Tyner, 220 Woodmont School Road, Piedmont, South Carolina. I bought this property thinking that it was already a residential, single-family piece of property. It's what it said when we was, when I was buying it, and then come to find out, went to pull a permit, and it's C3 commercial. The back property, there's literally power lines that run along that back property. There's no, you couldn't build there if you wanted to. I think at the last meeting, we was told that, for some reason, this was a Bass Pro Shop type of land or, or whatever on the last meeting we come to. That's all I got. If you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So this is part of the Bass Pro parcel?
I don't think so. It may have been speculative in anticipation.
That's probably addition one. This is pre-that, you know, this is definitely pre-that. This was a, this was an assemblage of property in anticipation of, of a project. At that point in time, there were some older roads in and out of that area, some which had been abandoned. But there was, you know, there was, there was plans made for that area that would have given access to it that never came to fruition based on the development of that land.
And I guess it's not for us to worry about highly access.
Well, that's, I mean, that's not, it's not our duty to go through the state laws of ingress and egress here. I mean, that's, but it...
That would be their problem.
I, I guess whoever sold this, Mr. Tyner, I mean, I don't, I don't think that they own the property that surrounds it. I don't think that's, I think they, obviously, it's their prerogative that they would sell it, it's just, it's sad that they didn't disclose that to them.
Well, and this lot was included in the Spartanburg County, the neighborhood, it was included. And so my understanding is that it was annexed after that subdivision was plotted. So this lot was envisioned in the subdivision for Spartanburg County.
I'll make a motion. That we have a reason...
For the purpose of discussion, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
You know, this is, you know, a difficult issue, and, and I have no, well, actually, I do have some hesitancy about it, but it doesn't have anything to do with ingress and egress, it's simply a service question for us. I mean, you've got one lot that is going to be inextricably linked to services that we're going to have to figure out how to, you know, to provide a host of city services to that we sometimes have enough trouble finding our city residents that live next door to each other, let alone at the end of the street. I, you know, it, I certainly don't, to preclude him from using that, that lot in some sort of residential, some residential fashion, but we have all been through the debate about trying to un-annex a piece of land, and that's, you know, not even an option for us. So I think there would have to be some discussion in regards to how we would address service issues. I don't, I don't, I don't, I just don't know how we do that. I mean, I don't, I'm not sure that I've ever crafted or had crafted any kind of a development agreement with a residential customer. I mean, I just don't know.
We have one example of this that's on Sheffield Road, it's in Belma Heights, it's behind my neighborhood. And the lady that lived there was a really big booster of the fire department, wanted to support them and be a part of the city, so we annexed her in, and she got, she was contiguous with our neighborhood, she was right behind us. And so a good friend of mine ended up buying the house, and, you know, to the mayor's point, it is, it is an anomaly, and it's, it is difficult to, a lot of times, forget to pick up trash there and brush there, and it's been a, it's been a real effort to make sure that he's kept on the radar and that he is, he is part of the city because he is, he's in, but he's kind of technically out, technically in, but kind of out, too. Are these the other developments, the R7.5 there, the multi-bandits and the R down below there, are they, are there active developments there, or we have to leave services in those areas now?
I don't believe so, based on the, the white dot means vacant, so those only have two addresses at this point.
Do we know the closest city resident from this location?
I do not, but I can find out.
Bottom of the screen considerably to get to, would that be Brockman, the climbing road that's... Is that Brockman?
My neighbor's had a couple things to discuss.
Please.
The area of which the white dot is, there is a development posed for that. The, I can't tell what the road is there. No, the... That one that goes up and does a T where you have that...
That's Overton that we just...
Yeah. So there will be a development there. Couple of things, one is for the access issue, that's only if there is a public right-of-way, like the one that we had to abandon going up that you see to the right of the screen there to facilitate the development of that property that's in that brown color. This doesn't have a public access, so it doesn't prevent us from developing it to cut off access to the property behind it. There is no public access or public right-of-way. So we don't have to, that's not our issue, that's, that property will be accessible from other points, but it doesn't have to be accessible from that piece that's at the end. The other issue, just to point out, is that the annexation in 95, that was part of the, that large annexation that pulled in several different little pieces of property, and this was just one of them, that got pulled into that annexation for the potential commercial development back then for the Bass Pro. Lots of little pieces of property came in as part of that annexation ordinance, which was a 75% ordinance. So they put pieces together so that they could get their numbers in place in order to bring that into the city. So that's just some historical perspective on why that piece kind of sits out by itself.
And that's not all that far from some of the new residential development, is it? On the other side of 85?
Correct.
Yeah, and that brick's kind of over here.
Yeah.
So we'll have...
That single-family residential district, that big brown, that panel piece, pieces scheduled for development, the development property right now.
What zoning is that sliver of green over there? To the far right?
Maybe open space. I can pull up GIS.
It's residential suburb, R S.
Thank you. R S.
Council, first reading of ordinance number forty-six dash twenty twenty. Information has been given in that regard. Motion second on the floor. Further discussion? Questions or comments? Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Dan.
No.
Council, we move to the first reading of ordinance number forty-seven dash twenty twenty. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property. Oh, excuse me, that's why we just, I misidentified the ordinance in that last reading. I didn't say forty-seven, did I? I said forty-six.
When you initially read it, you read forty-seven.
Read it forty-seven?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. All right, council, we'll move to the first reading of ordinance forty-eight dash twenty twenty. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a portion of property owned by the Greenville Office Park LLC located at two twenty and two forty J Street from D R D to seven R point five. Ms. Cotty.
Yes, sir. Um, these two properties are the portions thereof are currently part of the D R D River Reserve, um, at Pelham. And I go, this is an aerial of the site, um, adjacent to J Street and B Street. You saw some annexations and rezoning, or zonings to R seven five, um, that were second reading tonight that are related to this. Um, this is kind of the outer portion of that River Reserve subdivision that was approved. Again, that gold color is the D R D. And then it is designated as residential land use two in our future land use map. So what I wanted to show you, this is a current street view of the site. This is, um, the approved F D P or final development plan for River Reserve at Pelham. Um, so what we're looking at in the top, um, the top right corner, those two pieces that are on, um, the northern side of the road, those are the two parcels that are in question. The developer of River Reserve is requesting to basically take them out of the D R D and out of the neighborhood. And so you can see with the dark line, there are two parcels when you enter on your right and then there are five or six, um, that are not part of the development and they face J Street. So the developer is looking at taking these two out of the development as well, facing, um, developing them with homes facing J Street as well to provide more continuity and compatibility with the existing neighborhood. And then the, um, because it's a portion, they will be taking the very back, um, to continue kind of a landscape easement along that entrance of the road. And this is a more zoomed in version of that. So the darker circles that you see are considered plantings and then that hatched area is the existing portion of two lots that under R seven five would be, could potentially be subdivided into three lots. And again, they would, um, they would then face J Street instead of the internal, um, neighborhood road and they would kind of line up with those other five. So when you enter the neighborhood, um, you would have kind of a landscaped entrance on both sides and they thought, um, that having two homes right at the front and then a really long gap, um, where there weren't homes and then another, um, entrance of homes, they just, when they laid it out again, they just felt like it didn't make sense. So again, staff, um, looked at this in the neighborhood and it does seem appropriate. We do kind of understand why they want to do it and that certainly the rezoning, um, is consistent with the lot sizes in that neighborhood and we think it could help J Street as well, having kind of those, those homes face it and be more continuous. But happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Council, I entertain a motion to receive first reading of ordinance number forty-eight dash twenty twenty.
Sorry.
Have a motion and a second. Floor's open for discussion.
So the rest of the properties remains in the D R D? This is just being carved out again so you can go from two lots to three? That's, is that the summary?
Yes, I believe that their intent wasn't really to get three lots instead of two. I think their intent was to, um, what made the most sense for the River Reserve at Pelham. But the zoning that they're requesting would make it to be able to be three lots instead of two.
Why does that say that it's not going to be part of the reserve?
So it would not be part of the D R D anymore. So that portion where it's hatched would no longer be part of that neighborhood. They will just be individual lots owned and, or sold that are R seven five, that could be single family.
Okay, that's, okay, so the plantings that you pointed out, those are, that's basically kind of a buffer from if you come into the neighborhood and you're saying those, those three parcels are going to face the opposite direction?
Yes, sir.
I should hold hands. Is the owner of the property a representative, the owner of the property with us this evening?
The zoning on the ones that you're going to take out there, what will that zoning be?
They are requesting R seven five, which is a single-family residential zoning and it's consistent with other lot sizes in the area. And it would only allow for a single-family homes, um, as well. But it would, right now there are two lots and it would allow it to be subdivided into three. I'll go back to this.
Further discussion or questions?
What's the size of the current lots in the D R D?
I'm not certain, but they look closer to an R ten or R twelve. In the D R D. Again, this will be a gated, um, private community as well with a private road.
And just R seven point five is seventy-five hundred?
Yes, sir. Seventy-five hundred square foot minimum lot size.
They look, I mean, just looking at it on the map, it looks comparable to the neighborhood.
Yeah, it's certainly comparable to the, to the Mill neighborhood. Um, it's not necessarily, um, they are a little smaller than the, than the lots internal to the D R D.
Comments? Questions? Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Dan.
Yes.
Council, final, um, item of our regular meeting this evening is the first reading of ordinance number forty-nine dash twenty twenty. This is an ordinance authorizing a road closure as presented by Daniel Hughes, our city attorney. Uh, for the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive. And a second. Did you do it? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I think that, that's the manual, my step two, so I've got.
Okay. Uh, floor's open for discussion or questions. Um, I will ask staff to be available for, uh, questions, uh, in this regard, uh, to help council with their discussion, uh, if you're available and if, um, you are aware of, uh, an answer in regards to some of the questions that may be raised. I believe Mr. Hughes has remained with us as well to this evening. Uh, so floor's open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I do regret that these residents weren't brought into the mix earlier than this. But up to this point, it's been my understanding that we've really had no alternative, um, especially dealing with a railroad. Uh, we've had that conversation before. And I don't remember what the price tag was, but we did talk at one point about, uh, replacement cost and it was not cheap and we weren't sure exactly how to finance that. But I, I think the prudent thing to do right now is to close the road, of course, and block it off. Uh, I don't know about the, uh, about the gentleman who had the stolen vehicles. I'm not sure how we address that. But at any point, I, I would like to, uh, it's, at some point in the future, look at, going back with the new bridge. I, I sympathize with the lack of access for these people and it's not going to get any less, I mean, there's not going to be any fewer people moving into that area. And I believe it is a, it is a something we should think about redoing.
Now, that, that's about several new subdivisions down in that, off, off the bottom road down that way.
Now, when they first, first shut that bridge, who first, who shut it?
Well, I, I, I,
Because I thought the railroad road shut it.
Mr. Reo, are you aware of, who closed the bridge?
The bridge was closed in October twenty seventeen, uh, as a result of a D O T inspection of the bridge in September of that year. So it was found to be too deficient for,
So S C D O T closed the bridge?
Yes, sir. It was found to be too deficient for traffic. So that's why it was closed.
But in two thousand seventeen, we didn't have anything to do with the bridge then, right?
Correct.
Because, I mean, it belonged to, to the railroad then. But I'm saying in two thousand and seventeen, when they, No, I, now I was on, or, or correct me if I'm wrong, I thought it was the railroad.
That was my understanding, that in the general discussion, it said it was from the railroad.
Mr. Grant, you want to shed some light on this? I know I've been involved in some of the discussions with you and, 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 uh, Mr. Driggers and, and others that there has been considerable question about how that bridge came to be and, and who built it and who owned it and all that sort of thing. It doesn't appear in any of our records. Uh, the county,
Correct.
Basically holds the same claim that it, that it wasn't theirs.
Yes, uh, the railroad doesn't claim ownership, nor does the county prior to the city, um, annexing it. And then, of course, we have on the road now and we have no records of owning, ownership or construction of the bridge. So basically everybody's pointing and saying it's not mine, it's yours.
Well, if, if the railroad didn't, didn't have ownership, then why did they turn it over to us at the beginning when if they never had no ownership? And why are they agreeing to pay ten thousand dollars if they didn't have no ownership? Because my, my thing's on dealing with the railroad, you can't make them do nothing they don't want to do.
Well, I, you know, part of the question becomes, and I think this is part of the legitimacy of the discussion, is the air rights over the tracks because it's my understanding that indeed the railroad does control that portion of whatever goes over that. And so regardless of who does anything with it in the future, that's going to require action by the railroad, is it not?
We have a permanent, they've agreed to give us a permanent easement should we choose to,
But it's my understanding that anything that would be built over the tracks has not to conform not only to S C D O T standards for a bridge, but also to their standards as well too. Is that correct?
Yes.
And you, And they can't go back with a wooden bridge, can you?
You could, but it'd be really expensive.
Anything proposed over, would need their, I guess, agreement and approval.
So like the mayor says, anything that you're proposing, anything that you want to build, you're going to have to go through the railroad?
Right, and have to meet railroad specs.
But they don't have no say so in it. That makes no sense.
But the entire road is in the city's inventory?
Yes.
Has it always been?
No.
No.
When did we adopt the road?
I'm not sure, I have to,
Probably been done long, I've been here.
No, it was before that?
Yeah, it's been before then.
But traditionally speaking, I mean, just because we adopted a road with a bridge on it, does not mean we maintain that, that bridge.
That's a good question. Typically we do, however, this particular structure, it predates any records we have of anything like that. So the railroad doesn't claim it, county didn't claim it, city didn't claim it.
Well, to Mr. Bettis' point, I mean, you know, we, we've, we've looked at several alternatives, um, and I don't discount the potential need to, to, to examine in the future whether or not this is, this is going to be, um, something that we're going to want to take a look at. I do know that there have been discussions with, uh, potential developers, uh, about how they might assist in, in the future and, and, uh, helping to build a bridge. Uh, I know potentially there is some industrial land, somebody mentioned earlier in our conversations, nearly a hundred acres of land out there that, uh, I think could be zoned, uh, possibly for, um, industrial use or something similar to that. So there are some options on the table, but, uh, as Mr. Bettis said, this was, uh, this was not an issue that, um, that we looked at favorably at the time in terms of, um, reconstructing that, uh, that, that bridge, given the debate about, uh, who had ownership and, um, who was going to, uh, tear it down and, and whether or not anybody was going to put it back.
Others?
So just so I make sure I'm clear, we don't even know who or when the bridge was built. Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct.
And so therefore that's why no one's wanting to take ownership and responsibility for,
It's my understanding, yes, sir.
And I think the railroad approached us to tear it down because it had been D O T flagged and said it wasn't safe to drive on. Is that correct?
Correct. The railroad was concerned it could fall on their tracks and, of course, affect their operations, et cetera.
And so they realized that they approached us and asked us to shut down the road, that that would affect,
They asked us to, could they tear down, they made us aware that they wanted to tear down the bridge and that's, then that's when we started the wheels in motion to, if they're going to do that, we need to close the road.
Got motion and second on the floor. A vote in the affirmative is for the closure. Do I have any other comments, questions? Discussion?
Well, is, is this almost, uh, I mean, the, the road without a bridge is going to be closed. So the, the vote is kind of, you know, what else are you going to say?
Yeah, it's not the bridge, you can't,
Yeah, the road will be closed.
Valid point.
Have we, do we have a plan for the rest of the lots? Several other complaints that were talked about tonight, the, the other traffic patterns and different things and areas that they have to drive in and, I mean, are we, are we looking at that to make sure that those areas are where they need to be and, and up to snow?
And the other bridge?
Yeah, with the bridge, I don't understand with that bridge.
Well, it's a culvert down at the bottom of the hill. It, it is a little narrower than the road. We can certainly, you know, look at that. And if it snows, I suppose we can put that on the top of the list to make sure it's scraped.
Does culvert is something that we can take a, take a look at from an engineering standpoint?
Yes, I mean,
Does that bridge belong to the city?
I, I, I think the,
It's not really a bridge, it's, it's a culvert with walls on, it's not a bridge. Yes, ma'am.
I think the other, uh, comment that I made a note of, um, is in response to, um, emergency response chief, do you want to address that?
So in regards to emergency response, um, obviously it would be quicker to go that route, but we have not used that bridge in many years. we have not used that bridge in many years because of the size and weight of our vehicles. And then when D O T come through and inspected it and, you know, also came back and said it was deficient for normal traffic, we, we would not use it. We have not used it. We have agreements with other fire departments that will service that area from a closer standpoint. We still respond into that area, but we do have to go around, just like everybody else.
So Tigerville Fountain Department is.
Tiger River.
Tiger River.
Yes.
Is closer?
Yes, ma'am. That's one, that's one of the departments.
City, based on the fact that we have to go that way.
Yes, ma'am. That's one of the departments that we would use to that area. But understand, when we respond to any kind of a structural related response or something like that, we're bringing in resources from several different agencies, not just one other agency.
Where does Parker EMS located on that side of town? I mean, where does, or do they rotate like? They're located at the intersection of that grid here.
There you go.
So they're coming from that other side anyway?
Yes, sir.
Down twenty-nine?
Yes, sir.
That's not here in the block.
No.
Others?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes. No. Hold on, no.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Oh, no.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Thank you. Council on the executive session, we've got one matter to consider tonight. I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn to executive session for a matter as described.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion in order to executive session to discuss an economic development matter pertaining to Project Orange as allowed by State Statute section thirty dash four seventy-eight-five.
Comes as a recommendation. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?